Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Madam Clerk, will you take the roll, please?
Counselor Mackey.
Present.
Counselor McKay.
Here.
Counselor Carlton.
Present.
Counselor Pringle.
Present.
Counselor McQueen is not in, sorry, not present right now. Counselor Nielsen.
Present.
Counselor Patterson.
Present.
Counselor Dickert.
Present.
Counselor Kenner.
Present.
Counselor Keveney.
Present.
Counselor Body Senses Regrets, Counselor Kepke. Counselor Greg.
Present.
Warden Milne.
Present.
Counselor Dobreen.
Present.
Counselor Matrasovs.
Present.
Counselor Boarding Yell.
Present.
Counselor Echols.
On the court.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
We have all members and tenants with the exception of Counselors Body and McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before we begin, I want to acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality, and culture of the Anishinaabe, Six Nations of the Grand River, the Haudenosaunee, the Wanda, Winda, Wendot peoples on whose traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We recognize also the Métis and Inuit whose ancestors shared this land and these waters. May we all, as treaty people, live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples. Is there any declaration of paternity interest or other or declaration of interest related to any item on today's agenda? Not seeing any, if one should arise during the course of the meeting, feel free to declare it at that time. Uh, number six, adoption of the minutes. Uh, we have the county and committee of the whole, council and committee of the whole minutes dated May 11th. Would someone care to move adoption of those minutes? Counselor Echols, Counselor Greg, thank you, any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried, thank you. We have the Long Term Care Committee of Management meeting minutes from May 9th. Would someone care to move those? Counselor Keveney and Counselor Patterson? Any discussion on those minutes? All those in favor? That is carried, thank you. We have no closed meeting minute, closed meeting matters. Uh, we have one report, which is the Board of Health meeting minutes from March 3rd and March 31st. Dr. Ara is joining us, there he is, welcome, sir, how are you this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, good morning, counsel. Uh, I'm well, thank you, how are you?
Good, good. So, uh, if you'd like to proceed with a summary of what's been going on at the health unit lately, we appreciate that.
Certainly, from the two sets of minutes, Mr. Warden, there are two items probably the most worthy of highlighting. One of them is the update on COVID, and it was one of the last updates on COVID to the Board of Health as a standing item. In April was a very final one to remove the item as standing item. Obviously, COVID virus continued to circulate in the community, but the levels and the requirement for response are within, within the capacity similar to many other infectious diseases. So that is a good news to, to reduce the level of response to it or the urgency of it. The second one is related to water sample drop, drop off location. And in terms of background of this item, as you know, there, as many people around the table know, there is provincial program for testing private well drinking water. And the program is run by Public Health Ontario's provincial program. And there, historically, there was a number of location in Grey Bruce with drop off locations to drop off bottles. During the pandemic and as a byproduct of the policies of visitation to the hospitals and other organizations that host these locations, the, the drop off locations was limited at some point to only one location in Grey Bruce, which is the health unit. So we worked at the time with the essential services, specifically the grocery stores where they kindly hosted drop off locations, around four of them. So in Grey Bruce, we operated under five and, but historically we were over 10. So again, there has been spots during the pandemic or after the pandemic, the policies for these organizations continue to exclude drop off locations. So that resulted in areas in Grey Bruce that don't have optimal access. People have to drive an hour to drop off a location or sample to a location. So in communication with the Public Health Ontario, we realized that they're not able to expand their program. We involved the Ministry of Health and to, to be part of the discussion. And we decided to take ownership of this issue and provide a local solution. That is not the norm in, in the standards for health units. But the Ministry of Health gave us their blessing. And we have been in the past two months designing a program to ensure that anybody in Grey Bruce who needs to test water from private well, which is, many of us use private wells, can do so by, um, by access to a location within a 20-minute drive. And our team has been in communication with the municipalities to ensure the locations are spread out through Grey Bruce. We're waiting on final communication from four municipalities to confirm the location. And we're hoping this program will be up and running within a month from now. And I, I, I see this as a local solution for, 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 sorry, I see this as turning a challenge to an opportunity and provide a local solution that's usually more responsive to the need of the community. I'll stop there, Mr. Warden, open to questions as always.
Thank you, sir. Um, does anybody have any questions for Dr. Ara? Oh, Peter, you have your hand up, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you, and thank you, Dr. Ara. Um, it's encouraging to see that we'll be doing further testing. This came through our municipal council the other day in regards to our area in the town of the Blue Mountains. We do have a significant population on wells. So we look forward to that report. And you said it would be just to confirm it would be at least within a 20-minute drive because we're looking at about 45 minutes from the original list. So is that now will be expanded outward geographically?
Sorry, if you can repeat the question, the last part of it was the technology didn't.
I'm sorry, Dr. Ara, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm just, previously, our residents were saying it would be about a 40 to 45-minute drive for well testing from some of our rural areas. So with this new list, you're, you're saying it will be about a, just to confirm, but within 20 minutes drive of all municipalities?
Through you, Mr. Warden, correct. Yes, 20 minutes, we were aiming for 20 to 30, but I am confident the, the list and the distribution would be within 20. We, we still, one of the steps is to connect with courier companies locally and finalize a contract. But the locations themselves are within 20 minutes from almost all municipalities.
Thank you, Dr. Ara, that'd be great help.
It's worth mentioning that the, the, and I realize this is not related to Gray County, but the peninsula is a different situation and they have been actually doing their testing. Historically, we are in communication with them to see if we want to have a hybrid or something that would deliver or improvement on, on the current situation.
Okay, thank you for that, Dr. Ara. Any questions, Counselor Kentner? Use your microphone, sir, please.
It came on, there we are. Uh, it's not a question, though, through you, Mr. Warden, I'd just like to thank Dr. Ara for his support of the municipality of Meaford. You may have heard we had a little fire over there and we, we had a lot of problems as a result of it. And it was a busy week for Dr. Ara, helping us work through that. And I just thank him very much for his support.
Thank you, Ross. Any other questions? Counselor Matrasov, sorry, I didn't see that hand there, but go ahead, please.
Thank you, through you, the warden, I just wanted to follow up on what Counselor Wardon had, had started to discuss. I would just ask that, yes, that we continue, that you continue the, the, the direct contact with those of us in the municipalities to confirm. There's a difference between a 20-minute where the crow flies versus 20-minute to actually physically be able to drive to location. I live in an area where it will take me 25 minutes to get to Clerksburg or 30 minutes to get to Thornbury. And Feversham is about the same distance for me. So I want to be very careful that it's not just somebody that's looking at a map of Gray County and just drawing circles and saying that works because some of our intricate rural road networks do not allow us to go from point B as simply as, as we could if we could fly it.
Through you, Mr. Warden. And we are working off a map. Obviously, we didn't drive these routes because they're not finalized completely and we're still in communication. Our, our aim was to do it within 30 minutes. And based on the maps, it seems to be done by 20. I, I appreciate the feedback from the counselor that the geography or the reality might not be aligning with maps. And I, I much rather under promise and over deliver instead of the opposite. So I'll go back to the initial 20 to 30 minutes, our, our goal, but hopefully it's going to be less than 20.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Doctor, oh, Counselor Dobreen.
Thank you, through you, Warden, and thank you, Dr. Ara. Will, you're, you're estimating that you'll have these locations finalized in about a month? And they'll be posted on the website? I'm guessing.
Through you, Mr. Chair, definitely they'll be posted on, on site. We will be communicating about the importance of the testing and the availability of it through different channels. We already have an interview with Rogers TV and we have different lined up on, on the subject, but we have different channels that we need to ensure that the people who are using the service would know about it. It's worth mentioning, it's not just a location, there are many logistics. There should be fridges ordered and located in, in the specific location. The, the information for sure is or the different ways to deliver on answering questions to the public all need to be aligned. And we have been very well served by municipal staff that are very responsive and, and all municipalities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Ara, looking into the future, do you have any line of sight as to where the ask regarding the budget might be to Gray County? In the next budget cycle?
Um, what we know from the Ministry of Health verbally that the budget approvals will come through mid-August, by mid-August. So that's probably the earliest we can know. And in all cases, the, the budget that we put forward is, is not much different from previous budgets. There is a bit more increase. In the past few years, we did not ask for increase, but obviously with the inflation, there has been, the, the budget is built around 2.5%, which is quite manageable considering the, the size of our budget.
Very good, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Counselor Echols.
Uh, thank you, and through you, sir, to Dr. Ara. Um, we're talking about water testing and did I miss that part? We're doing, uh, the health unit for a number of years has done some water testing on different swimming areas, whether it be Fleischerden Pond and Gray Highlands and whatnot. Um, will that be continuing on? Sobel Beach and some of the other places will be doing that again this year? And is it in conjunction with some of the conservation authorities that do testing as well, too?
Through you, Mr. Chair, this type of testing has been going on. And we, we, again, we adjust based on the need and the changes. For example, the recent change in the authority over the Sobel Beach between the municipality and the First Nation again require us to change our, our ability to test since it's not under a municipal jurisdiction. And, but we, we have been communicating with, with any municipality related to testing, whether it is local, for example, the Soggy First Nations have decided to do their own testing. They used to do it on the south part of that beach and they continue to do it in the north. We have offered support, but obviously they have the capacity, which is great. Our goal always to support indigenous communities to build their capacity. In this case, it has already been there. And the beaches that we have been testing historically, we continue to test, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, sir. Okay. All right, I'll call the question to approve the minute. Oh, apparently we need a mover and second before we can vote on something. Funny how that works. Counselor Pringle and Counselor McKay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. See, that works a lot better if you have a mover and second, it doesn't? Yeah. Um, bylaws, we have one bylaw there, it's to, the bylaw be introduced and taken first and second uh, to amend bylaw to adopt a policy with respect to a code of conduct for Gray County Council. Would someone care to move that, please? Counselor Carlton? And Counselor Dobreen, thank you. Any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor? That is carried, thank you. News and celebrations, anybody have anything they'd like to tell us about? Counselor Keveney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, everyone. Counselor Kentner mentioned that we had quite a fire in Meaford two weeks ago today, and I just wanted to express our appreciation to the fire departments that came to our aid, Town of the Blue Mountains and Gray Highlands in particular. And Chatsworth, I know, was on standby to, to help if, if needed. And we're, we're very grateful for that support and for that of the county as well. Uh, we had 60 firefighters fighting that blaze and it was quite devastating for the community, but it was contained, so we're grateful for that and no one was hurt. A lot of cars were lost, but that's okay, they can be replaced. And Johnny Bee's will be and is already open at a new location, 245690 on the 22nd side road. So that's a temporary spot for them until they can rebuild, but the site is almost remediated now. It was, it's a big job, but they're trying to get it done while we have good weather. So that is well underway. And again, I just want to thank everybody who came to our aid two weeks ago when we had, yeah, that really massive fire, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keveney, and that's what we do in Gray County. Not burn stuff, come to, come to people's help. Just saying, just saying. Any other news or celebrations? Counselor Nielsen.
I'll stand for this one for the first time, Warden, if that's okay? I just want to recognize that on our May 17th council meeting, Greyhounds Council and our warden honored Counselor McQueen here at the table, but Mayor McQueen at our table for 25 years of municipal government and service. Uh, it is something that is pretty remarkable. I think I recognize that there's a few members of the table that might have joined this prestigious club. Uh, it is something to behold because we start off in this municipal government, we run for politics, we think we're going to be excited, then we realize how crazy we all are and how the residents will tell us how insane we are. So to run again and again and again on the Osprey County, or sorry, the Osprey Council, the Gray Highlands Council, Gray County Council, to be warden of Gray County, not to mention a number of numerous boards and organizations. Mayor McQueen, to me, has been on, I just wanted to honor him and say congratulations, sir.
Well done, and congratulations, Counselor McQueen. Counselor McKay.
Yeah, it's just stating, I don't know if it's good news or celebration, but I'll be attending my first director's meeting at Good Roads for three days down in London. And I look forward to any comments that I could take down to Good Roads. I know one of them is a concern over some of our conferences we've gone to. There's very little talk on rural communities, and that happened at the last meeting. So I'm going to be bringing that one forward. I am on research and productivity development and education training. So if you have any comments that you want me to take down, maybe at lunch or whatever, I can jot them down, take them down to Good Roads and see what I can do, so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, did I see a hand on this side? No? Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Last Friday, I had the pleasure of attending a dedication ceremony at Cobble Beach where they have installed 33 plaques outlining the history of there, the, talking about the nature and everything else along 14 kilometers of trails that run through Cobble Beach that are available for anyone to go and walk on them. And there's also the enchanted forest out there for little children to go to. So it was quite a wonderful dedication. Um, they had worked with Anthony Shigano from Cape Croker, who helped with all the history there. So it was, it's really quite interesting. So I would encourage everybody to go out and take part there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Dobreen.
Thank you, and through you, Warden. Uh, not to brag, but I was the first person to rise to the challenge by the warden at his warden's breakfast to go build and go fly a kite. You can view my creation at flyhopeful.ca under the Mayor's Challenge tab. I now pass the baton to all of my county councillor friends at the horseshoe and my Southgate councillors to go fly kite.
Thank you for that reminder. Counselor McQueen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, I just thought you were just telling us to bug her off. Anyway, um, yes, we have to get to that, 80 days, I think I saw something on the, uh, I wanted to thank my deputy mayor for recognizing my 25 years of service. But from saying that, I just want to make, make a couple notes. We had a very successful Ram rodeo, uh, a weekend or so ago, the 26, 27, 27, 28, I guess it was. We oversubscribed, you couldn't get any better, better weather. I mean, it was, you couldn't get any better. So there was lots of bronca riding and bull riding and people flying through the air. And so everybody survived, so it was a very successful weekend. And we haven't got the tally up yet, but I know we had over, I think over $52,000 in sponsorship. So that's pretty amazing, and that comes from our local businesses that came out and supported it. So again, that's, uh, we wouldn't have a successful event if we didn't have businesses stepping up to the plate, which we all support in Gray County as well. We did recognize Senior of the Year yesterday at our council, and that was Stuart Halliday, who was warden in 2018 here, served a term here in county council and was surprised. And I saw, so you had recognized somebody in your municipality as well, I saw them on Facebook. So again, that was an interesting and, and nice opportunity to recognize a senior that has, you know, done a great amount of work. Just, I apologize, Mr. Warden, I have a few minutes late this morning. I ran into our lovely construction and on Gray Road 18, which they're, they're out there doing their work, which they're good, and that's, this is the time for construction. So anyway, thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Counselor Boarding Yell, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. And in regards to good news, we, last weekend, we had the Second Annual Blue Mountains International Film Festival, uh, which almost doubled the attendance that we had for the first year. We, we received people from all over the world, saw many international and Canadian films, and we welcomed a lot of film producers, location scouts into not only the Blue Mountains, but into Gray County to take a look at our beautiful countryside for future possible filming locations. And it was just some great films and a lot of camaraderie in, in that aspect, just to showcase the area. So I just wanted to highlight that film festival, the second one was a great success.
Thanks, sir. I will, I know Kim has an, an item here, but I just wanted to mention that I was at the, at Gray Roots. Uh, I think, I forget what day it was, now it was last weekend, I think. Um, there are seven artistic panels that have been created by a gentleman by the name of Nile. I'll get this wrong, but McGeeza, I think, is how you pronounce his last name. He's originally from the Cape. Uh, he lives in Toronto now, he's an artist, First Nations artist, Aboriginal. And the panels depict the story of what uh, the treaties have done and are, continue to do, the impacts they have on First Nations and indigenous people in our, in our area and indeed in our country. And it was a very moving experience. And I encourage everyone to go down, have a look at those panels at Gray Roots. They're, they're, they're very interesting. There's a lot of stories, there's a lot of interpretation there. And I'm sure everyone can take something away from those panels and that story. So it was, it was, I, I was very happy to be invited to that event. And I look forward to more great things from Gray Roots. They are, they do a tremendous job down there. Kim, you have something.
Good morning, council. Um, earlier this week, um, the Municipal Information Systems Association held their annual conference at Blue Mountain Resort. Start off by saying how fortunate we are to have Blue Mountain Resort as a, as a place that can host these conferences. It's a wonderful thing to be able to bring so many delegates from far and wide into our community. But the special thing that I wanted to note was that MESA offers excellence in municipal systems awards. And our IT team was recognized with an award for managed security services. So I think that's a, it's a wonderful credit to Jody and Evan and the whole team in IT for the work that they do for us and, and to this council for your support to make sure that we're making the right decisions to keep everyone safe with technology. So thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing any? Oh, Savannah, please.
Thank you so much, sorry, we have a little video to share with you. Um, Rob's going to help me out here. But in the last two weeks, the Intelligent Community Forum has released the very first video in their Competitive Advantage series, and it features us in Gray County, which is really exciting. Um, so it's a lengthy video, it's 24 minutes long, so I'm not going to show you the whole thing. We're just going to show you two minutes right now, but direct you to a page, and we will send you the link after the video is over so that you can watch the whole video if you'd like. Uh, ICF is currently circulating it through their global network around the world, uh, which is really exciting for us to be able to tell our story. And it helps on our road to ICF and the recognition that we are doing to realize what the county is achieving and what all of our member municipalities and businesses are achieving together. So as you remember, in February, we were named to the top 21 communities. And on June 20th, we will find out if we make the top seven. Uh, so fingers crossed, we will be recognized as top seven. But either way, I'm going to be coming back to you next month with the Folsom Report to talk about some of the pieces that we used through this award cycle to be recognized because it's a really good story and that I'm just so impressed with what everybody is doing across Gray County. So we want to be able to bring that back for you. So Rob's going to help me with a quick two-minute video here. And then we will send you the link after council so you can watch the whole thing if you would like.
So now you know about Gray County, about its history, its agriculture, its manufacturing, its innovation, its clean energy industry. But when we asked Savannah what she wanted people to remember about Gray County, she didn't talk about what they've done, she talked about what's still to come and how they're going to work as a team to make it happen.
We have what we call Team Gray, and that means that you have all of the departments in Gray County. It doesn't mean just the Economic Development, Tourism, Culture Department. It is transportation, it is planning, it is everybody rowing in the same direction. And then it's the same with our member municipalities. So we are always working directly with our member municipalities because we need their knowledge and insight and their kind of ears and boots on the ground to be able to tell us what's going on.
because we need their knowledge and insight and their kind of ears and boots on the ground to be able to tell us what's going on and build those relationships and those meaningful connections locally. But to have those connections and to not have that regional perspective, it really misses something. So we realized that a long time ago. And we've spent years honing that. And I think we're in a really good place where we have excellent regional collaboration. And then we can take that Team Gray and we go beyond our borders. So we're working with our neighboring counties. We're working with all of southwestern Ontario. Um, because we know that it's the only way to get things done. Uh, you know, I think it's important that we give credit to ICF and the vision that they had for what this organization would do. Uh, because it has really made a world of difference. We look at things through a different lens and we look at things in how we bring that joy to our community and how we build that place where people really want to be. And it's only by you know, being on the ground and working with our businesses and our residents and our municipalities and our, every stakeholder at every level. We all have to come together to build that community. And it gives us such an amazing opportunity to build community pride, to celebrate all of the people who make Gray County such an amazing place because we really are amazing and wonderful because of the people that we have here and the things that they are accomplishing and the visions and the love that they have for this area. So I just, I think it's so important that, you know, all communities should be looking at ICF and we're really excited to be able to look at it again uh, in the future and to use it as a foundation for our documents. So as we develop our master plan and we develop our next strategies, that will be a central piece of it because it really gives the whole picture. It looks at the whole life around what it is to be a resident and a business. And that is where economic development needs to be at the heart.
Well done, Savannah. And, uh, I've had the chance to look at the full video and it's, it's boy, your, your heart just grows two sizes. It's, uh, as the Grinch has said, it, uh, it really does, uh, make you feel good to be a part of Gray County. Okay, um, I take a motion to, uh, adjourn the council meeting of our Counselor Mackey and Counselor DeBreen. All those in favor? That is carried. Well, now I'll just take a minute to change over to our committee of the whole meeting.